All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM. Happy New Year, everyone. Thanks for joining us here for our first meeting of the year and first official business day of the year. We're gonna observe our traditional moment of reflection and followed by the pledge. Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have council members Jack Rigger and Scott Randall joining us on the phone this evening. So Pam's kinda out there sitting by herself for tonight. But again, welcome to our first meeting of the new year. Our first order of business, I'd ask for an approval of the meeting minutes both from the November 21st meeting and the December 5th meeting as presented. Is there a motion to that effect?
Second.
Motion by Rob, second by Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Like sign opposed? Motion carries. All right. We now are down to public comment. We do have a recognition of guests, and we'll get to that in just a few moments. But is there anyone here that's not on the agenda that wishes to address council? Does not appear to be, so we will consider public comment open and closed. In your package, you've got a list of correspondence and information. I'll quickly read those aloud to you. We have the report of the cat and dog activity for Upstate County Commission for November 2024. West Virginia Department of Transportation notice to proceed design phase of Morton Avenue sidewalk and lighting. That is for Phase 1. We have the Charles Gibson Library Director Report for December 2024, and we have a FOIA request from SBA Communication for applications for a new cellular tower in the area. Those are in your packet for further review. Now we're down to recognition of special guests, and we welcome back this year once again, members of the Upstate County Special Olympics, specifically Tasha Carrico. Good evening. If you would, please approach the podium for your remarks and presentations, so everyone can hear both watching on the TV and online.
Hi, my name is Tasha Carrico, and I am representing Special Olympics Upstate County and Special Olympics West Virginia. Thank you for letting me speak to Sidney Council this evening. In Upstate County, we have athletes that participate in practice year end to compete in 11 sports statewide. We have lots of volunteers who coach and assist with practices, competitions, and fundraising. It's a village to keep not only on community functioning, but at the state level as well. That's why I wanted to tell you about one of our amazing fundraisers, the Polar Plunge, for reason for a reason. On February 8th, will be our third year doing the Polar Plunge at the Riverwalk Boat Learning Month. This brings me to the point of my visit. I would like to challenge you, Scott Mandel and Rob Zulliani, and as many Sidney employees to show their support for me and my fellow athletes to take the plunge that day. It will be a lot of fun with a custom competition and another party. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing you on February 8th.
Thank you, Tasha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How come you didn't ask Dave Thomas or Pam Capari to do it?
Tasha?
There is no Pam Capari.
Oh, that's right.
By the way, I like your gallows hoodings.
I've already been raising money before.
You're more than welcome.
I know.
More than welcome.
It's gonna be more than just two people.
Yeah. No, I said, uh...
Hold on. Well, Scott, I think it was a record.
Yeah, I am not sure. But thank you for your time.
Pam says she'll do it, and it's not below 30 degrees. Right, Pam?
Yeah.
And I'll go in, only if there's not a foot of ice on the river.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Joshua.
Thanks, Tasha.
See you on February 8th.
Thank you.
See you then.
Thank you.
Your dad's here too, right?
Yeah, so I'm here, Dave.
There you go. Hey, you protect me the 8th, okay?
I'll tie my breath before you out.
Yeah.
Not around my neck, though. Some people wanna do that.
Thank you in advance for saying that, for doing that.
And Rob said he'd like to do it also.
Did you say that?
Everybody welcome, Rob.
About that rope.
Rob, it's just like falling in Big Bad Azul's.
All right, if I am here, I will do it.
He's a busy person.
All right, thank you.
By the way, I love your zoots.
Maybe I'll do it more now. Sweeping him up a little bit. All right, well.
Get care of it, sweetie. Where you been?
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too.
You, too.
All right. I do not see that we have any additional guests that are on the agenda, so we will move toward the financial report.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
Okay, I'm gonna give your balances for general fund and related type of accounts like I do every month. Balance is December 2024. General funds money market and checking was at $1,206,000. We have the CD remaining at $86,000. Historic landmark savings, $3,000. Stalker Youth Center capital campaign at $326,000. We have had some refunds on that and adjustments to where they wanted some of these funds to go. COTAC $66,000, municipal stabilization $924,000, flood control account $78,000, consolidated public works board $125,000. We have the Semis at Terry CD at $235,000. Sales taxes at $1,843,000. American Rescue Plan money remains at $196,000. Opioid funds $113,000. In December, the general fund revenues were $680,000. That includes $500,000 that we brought over from the municipal sales tax fund, and expenditures were at $413,000. Invoices that are worth noting in that are $8,600 JF Allen for Blacktop for Street Department shop lot, and $4,300 roughy trucking for Crusher Run for alleys and sand for mixing the concrete for various projects. We had $2,000 Silcoat Concepts for painting curbs on Bogus Street, and $4,200 Methany Contracting for 14 loads of topsoil for the Madison Street project. Stalker Youth Center's activities report is in your packet. They reported 1,007 participants in various activities for the month of December. And then we're getting ready to start working on the 25, 26 general fund and COTAC budgets, so once we get the information out to supervisors, same as usual, the new council will learn that we put everything out to supervisors, ask them to develop their own individual budgets for, you know, the street department, the fire department, police department. Then we start setting up working sessions for council to listen to those presentations and decide what to fund on those budgets. So we'll begin that process. We have to have our budgets in by mid-March to the State Auditor's Office. One thing I'll have on your agenda for the next council meeting is we're required now to fire our W-2 wage information electronically to the Social Security Administration. It was optionable form. We'd send in paper products. And in order to do that, I had to enroll in the Business Services online at the Social Security Administration. I've done that, and I've got everything ready. But they require my employer to approve my role to have access to report that information on behalf of the city. We just received that letter back today, granting me that, but with your approval. And I want a formal approval because it tells me I'll go to jail if I don't do it properly, and I wanna make sure someone else goes with me.
Do you need a motion to that effect?
Well, I was gonna put that, because I didn't have it in time. Put it on this agenda. I was gonna put it on the next one.
Tonight, jail time it is.
That's called a vacation for me all.
Only approved within eight minutes.
And that's all I have.
Any questions for Ambi? Under her report, we have the approval of the bills that she just went over with us. Is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
Motion by Randy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ambi. Up next, Public Works Director, Ethan.
I apologize. It's kind of a little difficult to understand tonight. I'm trying to get rid of some congestion.
Were you at Scott Randall's house over the weekend? Is that...
He must have spread it to the whole town. I don't know. But at the December City Council meeting, Mr. Thomas asked for a summary of paving and sidewalks in 2024. So this is for the calendar year. You can see how it's broken up, but the totals were about 6,000 feet of paving done for $179,000. And sidewalks, we've replaced approximately 1,300 feet for $18,700. And then the breakdown in the report, Street Department with some of the other departments, we were finishing up some of the projects, the Richie Street project and specifically. There is also a summary of what all we did there. It ended up being a little bit more than just curving and widening to make sure that we had infrastructure in place to not have to go there and tear it up in a couple of years with the failing drop inlet.
It looks good, by the way.
Thank you.
Drastic improvement to what was there.
I think that they poured or are ready to pour the final couple drop inlets in, I believe, entryway tomorrow. So that'll be it for that project. And we also began work on the Jawbone Park stage that we approved, I believe in November, getting ready to pour the support walls for it. And then we'll be working to get some electrical and audio in and pour the top slab of it as the actual performing surface.
If I could interject there, we have with us Rodney with Channel 3. But Rodney, if you could give some time to speak with us about any suggestions you may have as far as audio hookups, that's the time it would do it. You know, perhaps we could look at putting a backup on the front of the stage, outlets at the front if necessary, you know, for any power amps and things of that nature.
Sure.
Just a good idea. Yeah, yeah. We value your input on that.
Yeah, I think Jerry spoke with Rodney a little bit. Now, I'm a phone call to try and set up something.
Okay, good. Good. Thanks.
And then, Street Department's also started on the entrances to Island Avenue, working on getting that sidewalk put back in place. That'll be where all the crews move to after they clean up Richie Street and finish it up. The Waste Department, we've been working to install the cameras on the trucks that we purchased a month or so ago. The final garbage truck that we have ordered, it arrived, and we haven't got it out yet. They're still looking over it. Hopefully, next week it'll start making its runs. And we're also working with Potesta on the SWF permit and modification that the DEP is requiring us for a new discharge that they hadn't previously said needed one. Santerre Sewer, we began moving to the CMH development to install that extension. That'll be to serve 21 lots on Fixburg Road. Lower Drive is also complete. We installed the last, or are installing the final manhole tomorrow. And a little summary of that project, it was 1,500 feet of gravity sewer, replaced seven manholes there, and realigned the sewer line from under a couple of houses that we've had issues with in the past. So that was a nice project that they were able to complete. They did a good job on it. We installed a area dirt ditch that's been out of service for a while, and Brian Mitchell retired on the 27th of December. He'd been with the city for 33 years, so I wanted to congratulate him on retiring from sewer. And the Water Department had a leak on Shawnee Drive, which led to a boil water advisory. They did a good job fixing it. I believe that they're going to, or they did run all the tests necessary, and everything came back good. We haven't had any issues since, so that issue's been resolved. And they moved from Island Avenue to Beet Street to finish swapping over the service lines into the properties. And for engineering, the Tanner Timberster Station is expected to begin work this week and continue through this month. After contract A is complete, there will be a punch list put together. Great number two, the contract to install the security fence for the Madison Street pump station. And great number one, they're working to install the security fence around the PSC generator. The Stalker Youth and Community Center contractor delivered the floor on December 11th and began making smaller remediations. And installation began on December 16th with the floor being completed early this month. Actually, I believe it's already been completed now, but... And the Morton Avenue project, as mentioned, we received the notice that perceived from the DOH, and Jay has begun working on the sign phase, and also working on survey and contract to locate the existing property corners for right-of-way purposes. And I believe that is all I have.
Any questions for Ethan?
Have you seen the floor of Stalker? How'd it come out?
I've seen some pictures of it. It looked like it took, well, I seen pictures as it was halfway complete. What they had done, it looked fairly, it looked nice.
All right, thanks, Ethan.
Thank you all.
Up next is Fire Chief David Kimble.
Happy New Year to everybody.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. As always, in your packet is our year-to-date responses through November. We're at 988 through, that's just through November, and 96 incidents for the month of November. Our call volume, next meeting, I'll have the total for the 2024 total responses in the end-of-the-year report. If you look, we're probably down about 6% from last year. So, which that's good. That means we didn't have to run into somebody's worst day as many times this year as we did last. I laid on your all's desks a copy of the roster for the Buchanan Fire Department. It started out for 2020, 25, 2025, the career staff, A, B, and C shift, having three on each. And when you go down, the volunteer members, they're listed there. And then we have what we call shift work members. Those are members of other departments that come and either train and run calls with us or come for special events such as the Strawberry Festival or Walmsley. They have capabilities of doing stuff and training with us, so they come and help us on our big events. And then the junior program there below, we still have Cadet Isaac Courtney, and Scott Preston's the coordinator and director of that. Mr. Clay, that graduated from high school, he turned 18, and he's actually going in the military, I believe, the first week of March. So he's no longer with us. I wanted to give a shout out to our members. Our fire conference is coming up in a couple of weeks. Got some good speakers coming. Actually, we reached out to all the county departments. We decided to offer them five free slots at each fire department for any other members, up to five of them, that wanted to come to the conference. In the past years, we've had departments come, you know, a couple here and a couple there, but not all the departments of Upstate County have participated. And we'd like for all of them to participate because it's a very good, you know, we have a lot of good lecturers, and then we also have some hot classes that would be very beneficial to them. I spoke about Captain Glenn Davis's mom donating $4,500 to a John Maxwell Leadership Class that some of us have already taken. 23 people in it, including Ethan, I'm tickled to death that he's taken it. Nine of our fire department members have taken it. Mayor Marco from Elkins has taken it. So very excited. Some sheriff deputies, a couple of police department members, and a police department member from Lewis County, and also a fireman from Lewis County. So be a good mix. Hopefully, they will get as much out of it as the ones that took the previous got out of it. Also, I wanted to mention, when you look at that roster, I want everybody to look at that, seven volunteers. Okay? Seven volunteers. And this is where we're at in this, in the world today. And when I joined the Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department, of course, the paid staff was part of the volunteers back in 1989. So that's how long I've been in the department, almost 36 years. And we had over 30 volunteers, and that included the paid staff. So when you look at the paid staff here and including volunteers, we have 17 actual responsive members in our department. I spoke up here for the last two, three years that we're in code red for volunteers in Upstate County. It continues to get worse. I wanted to speak about Dion Walmsley. Dion spent 22 years with the Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department. He recently retired because family time, you know, he has a family member that is sick, and sometimes he has to stay home and help take care of her. You know, he's working a couple jobs. Everybody, you know, the way everybody's finances were in the last three, four years, you had to make money when you could. So we are down to seven volunteers. So over the past seven, eight months, the mayor had sat in a meeting with myself and firefighter Brian Potter a while back. The volunteers are looking for options. They can't, on a regular basis, have enough people because their bylaws makes them have 50% of the body to be there to have business meetings. And there was a time that they went three months without even having business meetings. So they're at the point now where we're gonna have to sit down and talk about what are the options for the Volunteer Fire Department? How can they still function in an organization but not have to have the business meetings and stuff like that? And I have, I linked the mayor and the city attorney in on an email to the Fire Marshal's Office about that. And hopefully, we get back on regular time. Everybody gets back off vacations. Sparky's his name. He's the one that looks over all the fire departments statewide. I've reached out to him and talked to him, but I wanna have an official meeting. What are the options of volunteer fire departments that are getting smaller? Can the city absorb them? Do we have to become a municipal fire department? What are the options? So that's where we're at right now. But for those of you out there listening in the newspapers, you know, we're no different than any other fire department, you know. Everybody's struggling right now. And, you know, we're one bad call away from, you know, Elkins had a fire fatality last week. You know, they rescued the lady, and she ended up passing away a few days later. But, you know, it's just, we're here to serve our community on their worst day, and the numbers of us being able to do that are dwindling. I told the mayor tonight, my last day is in the Buchanan Fire Department will be Christmas Eve 2025. And I, you know, when I leave, you know, I'm a big person to say, the hardest thing on a new chief's an old chief, I'll disappear. I'll blend in somewhere else. But I won't be part of the organization here anymore. So who's gonna take my spot? Who's, you know, with Dion leaving, who's gonna take Dion's spot? So we don't have people knocking the doors down. And we do have high standards. And I can guarantee you, the Buchanan Fire Department will not relinquish those high standards. Because I'm sure everybody's sitting up here and in here, if you have an emergency at your house, you have expectations of what shows up, and we do, too. I'm not gonna have somebody driving a fire engine that doesn't know how to run it, or somebody that shows up that can't remember how to do CPR. That will not happen. So I'm just up here, we're gonna have to start looking at options. The volunteers will be part of that conversation as we go on down the road. So, but other than that, Happy New Year. If you have any questions? Dave, I knew you had a question.
What was I looking at? The, I got a write tonight, and the person that drove me down Arnold Avenue, and it was actually Ambi, and she was saying, geez, I don't know if a fire truck could get by these cars on Arnold Avenue. by these cars on Arnold Avenue. Do you, do you occasionally go out and look at the streets that people are maybe parking on both sides and maybe they shouldn't?
Around that church, it, it would be very difficult, especially on a Sunday morning. I can guarantee you that. We, it would be very, if, if you had to go up either one of the streets there on either, either side of the church on Sunday, you, you'd probably bump some mirrors.
Yeah. Well, this was 6:30 this evening.
Yeah. And they probably, are they having an event at the church?
I don't think so.
Yeah. So there, there's a couple of streets in town that, you know, that park on both sides that can make it difficult, especially if the weather's bad. It's dark. I mean, you know, you're just, it's tight.
We have several pinch points in town. Lower West Lincoln Street is one. Pennell Street at the corner there, Franklin is another one. Meadow Maple, the, there are pinch points there. Florida Street at East Lincoln is a pinch point. I mean, we do the best we can. I mean, when the city was built, it was built without large fire apparatus in mind. Look, look what, the fire engines used to be able to fit in between the courthouse and the old jail. That's why it's called Emergency Lane. Where Rolston Press was, was actually Buchanan's first fire department. And a fire engine could fit in between, in that alley. We look at, we, we, you can't even fit a, a modern pickup truck through there today.
Fire engines were delivered on a rail car.
Yeah.
A closed rail car. So that's how big they were.
Yeah. You see the old pictures of downtown Buchanan with the old fire trucks. I mean, they, they, they could fit on a sidewalk almost. Now, look how wide Engine 11 is and the ladder truck is.
Yes, there, it does concern me that, that area there, especially around the church because, you know, they're, the church especially, but there's several big homes up that way, you know, especially on Arnold Avenue. Those are balloon frame houses, which is an old style build that they burned very quick. And they burned from the first floor to the attic real fast because there's no fire break. So, you know, you'd have to get the ladder truck in there. And, you know, it's kind of like, I don't know, most of you all probably don't sit around and watch some videos of training drivers. But in New York City, that's why they put big bumpers on fire engines, I guess. So, you know, if we have to, that's what we have to do to save somebody's lives. So, yeah.
Well, I mean, you, you tore up an end, you tore up the ladder truck down here on, on, on Main Street. The fire department did. I think Elrod did it, maybe. I don't know.
Well, I was sort of concerned about it, I guess. Yes. Yeah. Like, I never know that. Any questions? Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir. Happy New Year.
Same to you, Jenny. Happy New Year.
All right. City Attorney Tom O'Neill. I don't know if he has a report besides what we, we, I know he's got some news on one of our old business matters.
I can speak to that. Happy New Year to the council. With respect to the West Lincoln property transfer, I can report that I did receive the, the review plat from Potesta. That is, I'm going to be with Jay tomorrow to review that and make sure that that's all in order. And if it is, which I imagine it is, I will be moving along on this issue pretty quickly. I still need to come up with final D language with West Lincoln's attorney. Whether that happens in time for me, two weeks from tonight, I'm hopeful. I'm not prepared to promise that at this time just because I don't know what their position is going to be. But we might be in a position to move on the, on the old business at least to, at that time. So I'd be happy to take any questions. In case anybody's wondering, who's watching, following the game, Notre Dame is leading 23 to 10 with two minutes left in the fourth quarter.
Okay.
I know it was important, which is an important update for everybody.
Make sure I get that in a minute.
Okay. Very well.
Thanks, Tom. Under old business, you see B and C, Notice of Advertisement of Human Resource Management and Notice of Advertisement of Information Technology. I would like us to consider all of our options here. And I know that we have had discussion regarding a person for each position. But I think it is important and prudent of the city to also consider what a firm in each position would look like as well. I'm not saying that, that, that is the direction that we would go. I just, and, and we're in a unique position here where we're looking at, at, at these two areas of our city. I, I think if we're going to, if we're going to have the best information and the most information to consider, why not also include, in addition to interviews with individuals for the positions, also consider interviewing any, in, in, any business opportunities that might be important for us to consider as well. There are firms out there that handle IT and there are firms out there that handle both payroll and, and human resources together, as in one firm would handle both of those. It is a very common practice. It may not be a good fit for us and, and that's okay. But I, I think just for us to have all the information possible, I'd like for us to consider opening that up as a possibility as well.
I think that's a good idea.
What would, what would that do to the job description? Would that do two different, two different job description?
I don't know. I read through that and I'm not sure that would, because the, the duties are still the same. It's just, they would be, it would be either be a person or it would be a firm. There are some difference, obviously, because the person, if it was a person, it would be on our payroll. They would be reporting in this building every day versus, versus a firm would not. But outside of that, the, the typical duties of what we're asking for are pretty similar. Again, it, I mean, we may, we may exit the interview process and say, it's clear. A person may be for each. But we also may say, wow, I hadn't considered that this could be done with a firm. And, 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 and maybe, and maybe we like what a firm could provide us.
I like to look at what other people have done or organizations have done. Do you know many models? Does anybody know many models where they, they've looked at applicants from, applications from individuals and firms for the same position?
That I don't, I, I know that just through my knowledge in the municipal league, there are cities that use a firm. There are cities that use an individual. That, that's as far, as far as how they went about selecting it. Did they interview, did they have one person sitting in front of them and then for one half hour segment and then the next half hour segment, did they have a business sitting in front of them? That I don't know. But, or if they had, if they had a separate process to where they only interviewed people, like individuals for the position that would be on our payroll system? Or, and then, and then did they interview just candidates that were firms? That I don't know.
Well, I, I would be interested to see the application process from both individuals and from firms. I would just, you know, it's not going to be apples, nor, it's going to be apples and oranges, I guess. Do we want to go with an apple or an orange? It's not going to be apples and tapples. But Mr. Rigger has worked on the job descriptions quite a bit. What, I'd be interested in your opinion, Mr. Rigger.
Well, I know we had this discussion several weeks ago. As far as a firm goes, the issue, I believe it was considered the last time was timeliness. If we have a personnel issue that demands immediate attention, what do we do if we have to wait for the firm, quote unquote, to participate or get involved in a situation? That is my only concern. Well, you know, that's the major concern that I have with an HR firm. As far as IT, I believe that the city has contracted with other companies in the past. And, you know, although they may do, you know, quality work that meet the needs, again, comes down to timeliness. I think AMB would be the person to address that as far as the IT person for the IT position because she knows the needs much more than I do. But as far as the HR, the issue is timeliness. If we have a legal issue, Tom's not available for whatever reason. And we don't have an HR person in-house, what are we going to do with firm?
That's one of the things that would be addressed in the interviews and the proposal.
Well, yes, it would be, but still, that's still going to be the problem. So, I mean, that's, that's just something that obviously has to be taken into consideration.
I think there would be two separate, I, I think the questions, although there would be similarities, I think the question, the questions would be modified a little bit for a firm sitting in front of us to address those kinds of things. Because, I mean, I understand Mr. Rigger's concern, but we don't know until we, you know, until we ask the question. I mean, they, they could, they could sit here and say, well, yeah, it could, it could be a week. Well, that, or it could be three days. But that's unacceptable. We can't, we can't operate like that. But if, if, if there's, you know, they can cite examples to where that has not been the case, that they've addressed things, you know, as they come in on an immediate basis, I think that needs to be considered as well.
I would assume that they would come in with, with a bank of references.
Right. I would say so.
That we could check with and say, you know, how is their time limit been? How's their response time been in your situation? You know, we're not asked, that's not an intrusive question to ask another company that employs them. Because it's not a direct question about their employment practices. But, you know, just how, how have you appreciated their time limits or have you been frustrated by their lack of time limits?
Right.
I mean, I, I think, as a former council member, you say, you know, decisions aren't as good as the information presented to you, citing Mr. Ryland's, that looking at both might be a wise thing to do and, and not rule out one or the other, one over the other.
I just think we're in a unique position here where we've never really had a true HR director position. I mean, AMB is, I mean, but AMB, but AMB, it's not been AMB's primary role.
Right, right.
I mean, AMB's been everything here. So we've never.
We wanted you to get out of here alive.
Well, 20 years ago.
She's got fancy footwork and a quick slap jab, but I don't know.
20 years ago, you didn't even have a personnel handler.
Right.
Okay. And I think one of the concerns I have is you need to separate the IT from the human resource. IT is moving very fast in our society today. And we have artificial intelligence that's going to make a huge change on a lot of different things. And then you also have a lot of software that is becoming much more prevalent in this operation.
Just to clarify, we're not suggesting that the HR and the IT person would be the same person.
I know that. I didn't, I didn't say that. But the, I think that the movement, the speed of the IT is very, very important. And I'm not sure a person that's working here as an IT specialist is going to have all the information that's needed if we hire a firm. Who knows? But I think your position, Robbie, to ask that question is an appropriate decision. We want to take a look at it.
Well, it's one of the reasons I stated I'm not as concerned with the diploma that they've received five years ago or 10 years ago from a particular institution. I'm concerned with continuing education. If they're only as good as, as the amount of time they're putting in constantly, daily, weekly on educational approaches to their chosen field. They can be from Yale. Doesn't make any difference if they're 10 years past due. And they aren't keeping up with modern technology.
So I think the discussion tonight is for both B and C is, it's, it's on the agenda to, to, to move this forward, to get this, to solicit applications in here for both positions. I just wanted to vote, in opening the discussion, to also make sure that we can include firms for both as well to consider, just so we have all the information at our fingertips to make this decision, make these decisions, I should say.
I'm good with that.
All right. Do, Scott, you, you agree?
I do, yeah. I think there's going to be pros and cons to both aspects. I kind of lean towards what Jack and Dave was saying, that IT is, is going to be, in my opinion, it's probably, we're going to lean towards a, a third party doing that and a contract that they would be beholden to. As opposed to HR, I think in-house training, in direct contact with AMB and, and everyone there could also be more beneficial than a third party. But then again, I'd like to weigh the pros and cons of both once we have that. In any event, the big thing of taking on an employee that's going to have health insurance, et cetera, et cetera, with the city and become an employee versus having an arms reach with a third party is another thing to consider. Thank you.
I also want to note, we haven't had a meeting since. We, we lost our, tragically, we lost our benefits representative. A few weeks ago, Pete Baxter died of a heart attack.
Did he really?
He didn't. It was very unexpected. I've known Pete long before this relationship with the city ever came about, just from our life and insurance. But Pete, Pete died from a massive heart attack. He was dead before he hit the floor. So we no longer have our, our HR representative.
We just was contacted. We do have someone to replace him.
Right. But Pete has been wonderful. I mean, he, he's diligently driven to Buchanan from Huntington to meet with our employees once a month. I mean, he, he was really, really good at what he did. And I, I absolutely hate it. I was very sad when I got that, when I got that news. But.
How old was Pete?
Not that old.
I didn't think he was that old.
So, but anyway, so that, that, that in and of itself is in transition with our current setup. So we, you know, this is, this is, this is even more time sensitive for us to, to consider. So I guess at this time of the enter hand motion that I think we can combine B and C and say, I'd like for us to solicit applications from both individuals and firms to, to assume an HR management role and an IT management role for the city of Buchanan. Two separate positions, but individuals and firms for both to, to apply here.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Thomas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pam. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Like sign opposed. Motion carries. All right. Mr. Rigger, do we need to, do you need to abstain on, under new business for building and wiring permits?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I, I thought so. I glanced through them this afternoon and I thought I saw that. So under new business, I asked that you approve the building and wiring permits. Is there a motion? Motion by Rob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Randy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries, noting Mr. Rigger's abstention. Oh, excuse me. We have a waste board appointee. Let me pull his name here for us. I'd like for you to consider J T Piniger. I don't know if I'm saying the last name correctly. Piniger, Penajar. J T is, he and his wife, Tanya, live up on, off Shawnee Drive here. They, they live just off of it here in town. He's a young guy and very interested in getting involved in civic service here. I think you'd be a great board member. So if you would join me, I think you'll, you'll get to know him and you'll get to like him. J T Piniger. That's P I N E G A R.
Is it in the city limits or anything?
No. So it's a good question by Pam. So we, we did modify that a few, a few years back. To serve on our utility boards, you do not have to live within city limits. You just have to be a customer of the utility. So as long as you're a city of Buchanan Water So as long as you're a City of Buchanan water customer, City of Buchanan sewer customer, or City of Buchanan waste customer, you can serve. You just have to be able to make a decision for a service that you receive. Yes, that is correct. All right, we have a motion by Randy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Likes, sign opposed. Motion carries. All right. Finally, under new business, we need to reschedule our city council meeting, or I've asked that you would consider rescheduling our city council meeting, March the 6th, due to a conflict with the Chamber of Commerce's annual dinner at the convention center. They always try to have it on a Thursday. So they always try to work it around a potential speaker. So March 6th is the chamber dinner, and that conflicts with the city council meeting. So we can do one of two things. We can reschedule it, or we can just cancel it for, for that time.
Let's reschedule for March 4th.
We're scheduled for Tuesday, March 4th?
No.
Okay. That is the recommendation by Mr. Thomas. Is there, is there a motion to that effect?
Some.
We have a motion by Thomas, we have a second by Pam, to schedule the city council meeting for March on Tuesday, March the 4th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Likes, sign opposed. Let Tammy know that we can attend the chamber dinner. All right. We're down to council comments and announcements. Pam, anything from you?
Just that probably next month, I'll start the Downtown Decor meetings again. I'd really like to get some new faces involved and got some ideas. And I want to talk to the mayor about, we need to upgrade some things downtown for decorating and get some money for that.
Well, we're coming into some, we're coming into budget time, so.
I know, I know. So, you know, we've had the same decorations downtown for years. And we bring those out other places and get some new downtown as well.
What is that meeting?
I'm hoping to have my first one in February.
Oh, in February, no date yet.
Yeah.
Just make sure that, you may want to have it before the end of this month, just the first one. Because whatever the committee decides and wants to recommend, will have to go through the Revenue and Expense Review Committee and then come into the budget time.
Okay.
You don't have to, but just keep that in mind, the calendar. Anything else?
Well, are we going to advertise for these, the IT and human? Did we decide on it, start advertising now? Or when are we?
That was part of the motion, yeah. We're going to get the advertisements out.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
Is there going to be a, like a, what am I trying to say? They have to have, we're hoping to hire and all that.
Yes, the advertisements will include that. It usually gives, you know, a 10 day or so period of, or 20 days of application time. And then as soon as we receive the applicants, as soon as that timeframe closes, then we start scheduling interviews.
But we haven't picked dates yet or anything?
No, because we've got to get it, it's all got to go, the legal ad has to go in the record delta as the newspaper of record for Upstate County, and we have to follow their publishing dates. So.
All right, that's it, thank you.
But we'll also advertise it on Indeed and, you know, so. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. We'll go over to Scott Randall.
Just wanted to thank everyone. Hope everyone had a great holiday. Happy New Year. Pam, you said that, was that a committee going to have a meeting on the decorations?
Yes.
By the end of the month?
Yes.
Okay, and that's, and what is that called again? I'm sorry?
The Downtown Decor Meeting.
Downtown Decor, okay. Hope to see everyone out at the, I know it's next month, and it will likely be cold, but the polar plunge will be cool. Wear a costume.
Be nice if your wife would get involved there.
Oh, yeah, I'll drag her down there too.
Maybe she can save some people, that'd be great.
I think a one, Mrs. Libby Randall might be a good addition to Pam's Downtown Decorating Committee.
Yes.
Sure.
Very true.
All right. Anything else, Scott?
No, thank you all.
All right, thank you. Hope you feel better. Mr. Rigger?
I don't have anything other than Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. Mr. Thomas?
I've been threatened to be silenced, so I will. Happy New Year to everybody. And all be safe.
Rob, is that your doing? Whatever, keep it going if that's.
Something on his foot right now.
Mr. Ziliani?
I have nothing but Happy New Year as well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sanders?
Okay, I'll just say Happy New Year to everyone as well. You know, we do want to welcome the fire conference at the Event Center at Brushy Fork in a couple of weeks. And we'll have a list of other activities coming out pretty soon. It's going to be a pretty robust February and March, at least for the, for the center there. So again, Happy New Year.
Thanks, sir. I will follow suit. Happy New Year. Hope everybody had a great Christmas. We're off and running. Next meeting, I will have the annual State of the City address ready for our, to get the new year kicked off. So that makes Dave Thomas happy whenever that, whenever that comes around. So, all right. At 7:53, nicely before 8 o'clock, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
A move.